The time is 6:32 and we will call the regular school board meeting to order on Monday, February 23rd and have roll call, please.
Deit.
Present.
Walker.
Here.
Frisbee absent, May Cumber absent, Wintering.
Here.
Three board members present, two were absent. Agenda item one, approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
I would ask that items seven and nine be tabled since we only have three out of five board members.
Okay.
Motion to approve as amended.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as amended by tabling items seven and nine. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Wintering?
Yes.
Deit?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Motion carried, three to zero. Agenda item two, it's written a little differently so I will begin by going through it. As we begin our agenda tonight, I'll explain our process for public comment. The board will hear comments from the public in conjunction with each agenda item using a structured process. As board president, I will ask for comments when we reach that item on the agenda. You will be asked to approach the microphone, state your name, and limit your comments to two minutes. At this time, I invite any member of the audience to step up to the microphone with comments about items of interest or concern that do not appear on tonight's agenda. Please begin by stating your name and contact information. It would be appreciated if you would limit your comments to two minutes so that we can keep the meeting moving in a timely fashion and allow others an opportunity to speak as well as allowing the board to complete the full board agenda in a timely manner. Comments from the public are limited to matters within the board's authority. Please understand that we as a board cannot discuss items not already on the agenda. Iowa sunshine law prohibits us from having a discussion without the proper notice to all of the school district community that the issue would be discussed at tonight's board meeting. Also, please remember, you are making comments in a public meeting. Should you make comments that the subject of the comments considers to be inflammatory or libelous, you as an individual may be subject to legal action brought by the subject of your comments. Thank you for your support of our school district. Are there any comments by the public this evening? Hearing none, we will move on to agenda item number three, comments by board members and superintendent. I'll start off by saying that two weeks ago at this table, we talked about what a great time it is to be a comet. And I believe that that tradition and enthusiasm has continued over the last two weeks and over the weekend and even today. So, Dr. Cox?
Yeah, I want to congratulate our bowling coaches, Doug Bowlen and Jerry Mitchell. Our boys team placed third in the state today in Des Moines at the state tournament. Not bad for the first year as a program, actually pretty impressive for a first year as a program. I want to congratulate Jake Nishel and Nick Jacobs on fifth and sixth place finishes at state wrestling over the weekend. And wanted to share that we had a really productive lobbying trip to Des Moines on Tuesday. A big thanks to Justin DeVore for all the work that he did to get us prepared for that meeting, fact sheets, face sheets of legislators coordinating the trip with IASB and so much more. So, thank you, Justin.
Thank you, Justin. Board members have any comments?
I just wanted to echo the congratulations on the sports and theater things, but also that I had my first experience at Comet Cafe Valentine's Day. My wife and I went, I wanted to commend them. It was a fantastic meal and the service was excellent, so, great program.
Yeah, they always do a great job there. It's something to get on your calendar and never miss one of them.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, you know, as far as our lobbying efforts on the Hill, I really enjoyed taking part in that. I think we all were armed with a lot of good information and felt like we had done our homework to, you know, have all of our talking points and make an influence...is my microphone not working? And make an impact with the legislators that were there. The other thing that I wanted to say is that we would encourage the public as well as teachers and support staff to also lobby, you know, what we were lobbying for was supplemental state aid where the governor has set it and the House has passed it at 1.25 percent which we don't feel is going to measure up to what we need to operate our schools going forward. And so, you know, we asked the public, we asked the teachers, all of you, to join with us and reach out to your legislators in any way you can and help them understand we need to, we'd like 4 percent.
And anyone who is on Twitter and follows the @CCComets had their Twitter feed completely blown out of the water this afternoon as all kinds of tweets were going out with the superintendent's blog that was posted over the weekend and tagging all kinds of people. So, we're trying to get the word out and I agree, it was a very eventful day and a long day, but we had a lot of fun and talked to a lot of representatives. And I think we made an impact with all of the social media exposure we had as well as talking to legislators.
Absolutely.
Our school board association took a number of pictures that they posted on their Facebook page, even caught up with Lorraine as she tracked down the governor in the hallway and had a chat with him, so, very good day.
Very good.
Any other comments by the board? Hearing none, we'll move on to agenda item four, which is BLDD design update. Jean Underwood is here again.
So today.
Oh.
So tonight, I just want to give you an update on the changes that we've made since our last board meeting, two weeks ago. If you remember, we met with staff for two days, took their feedback and then presented at the board meeting as well, so we have a few updates. I'm not going to go over the overall plans, I just included those for your reference. So, the second floor. All right, so the changes that we made to special ed, I'm just going to kind of zoom in, this is in the center of the learning studios. It's going to be sheet nine. You can see that we've made the first floor and the second floor pretty much identical. You can see we have a teaching space, a kitchenette, a handicap accessible toilet room including a shower, and then two calm rooms or restrooms, resting rooms or breakout rooms, if you will, on each floor. Then you'll see we have a storage closet on one floor and a fiber optics room on the other floor. And so, we'll be working with the IT department to figure out which floor that IT closet needs to go on, but it'll be somewhere in that space. All right, the next area that I wanted to draw your attention to is the administration area. So, this is sheet 11. You can see we've reconfigured the main administration area, so this is the front door, if you will, the secure vestibule or entry sequence. Come into the reception area, waiting area, there's two workstations with a direct view of the entry, they can buzz people into the building from that point. I think we'll probably add a couple windows that go into the commons area as well so that students can be passively monitored by office staff as well. A large conference room, we're showing 12 seats around the table at this point. Principal's office here in the corner, secured file storage in the center of the suite, the nurses' office area, including a desk, two cot areas, kind of a treatment area, lockable storage, and then a toilet room as well in that location. This allows access, when the nurse is in here, she can prop this door open to the commons so the students know that they can come in. When that door is closed, then students would come into the reception area and either be treated by one of the secretaries that's on duty, or if the nurse has that door closed, they can come that direction as well. This also provides an easy way for parents to come get kids that are sick, to come right into the office, and they're right here available. As you walk your way down this corridor, this is the teacher's lounge and workroom. So, there is a kitchenette along this wall, some additional lockers for substitute teachers, itinerary staff, the secretaries wanted to lock their personal belongings into a locker that had the opportunity to do that. Staff toilet rooms are immediately off of this. We envision the furniture in here being easily reconfigurable rectangular tables that are more of a counter height so the staff can be collating, getting flyers together, those kinds of things, so it can really be used as a workspace. We have a...oh, I'm sorry, this was the kitchenette on this side. This is the copier printer area with storage for paper, those kinds of things. Up in this corner, we have the AEA office, which could also serve when that's not occupied by those staff as an itinerary office. So, the access to this is actually off of the corridor that goes down to the learning studios. It's at that five foot above entry grade level, so that is higher than the main administration area, which is at the lower commons level. The next area that we've been working on is the locker rooms off of the gymnasium. So, the feedback that we received from staff and the athletic department was that they needed enough lockers for athletics for both middle school and high school. They needed, we still need PE lockers for all the students, and then a large shower and toilet room. So, we weren't able to get absolutely everything that the staff was asking for, but I wanted to bring this layout in and let you take a look at it. If you look up here in the upper right-hand corner, this gives you the locker count per suite, so if we have a boys' suite and a girls' suite, or they could be reversed, they're exactly the same. For the locker counts, we've got 60 high school athletic lockers, which are the 18 by 18 by six foot high, so those are the full height lockers. We have 64 middle school lockers, which are a little bit smaller, they're 15 by 15 by 36 inches, so they're the double stacked. Then we also have some additional tall lockers, they're a little bit smaller, they're the 15 by 15 by six foot high. So, we just weren't able to get enough of the 18 by 18s, but we were able to get enough lockers for the 70, which was what the count was that was asked for. 222 PE lockers, now these are the lockers that are one foot by one foot by one foot, so just enough for your gym clothes. There's 222, so this should be almost enough for everyone. You can see the PE locker room just has the lockers around the perimeter. If you wanted to use this as a small team room, you could do that. The benches that we're showing, those are just movable benches, they can be pushed aside, they can be, you know, taken out if you don't want them in there. As far as the toilet and shower rooms, we were able to get four plumbing fixtures for either toilets or urinals or combination of those, as well as six showers. And I know staff had requested eight, but we really just weren't physically able to get eight in here. And we weren't able to get more than four toilet fixtures as well. There's doors that go between the locker rooms and the PE rooms, I mean, the athletic locker room and the PE locker room, so that that is basically one suite. Students have access from either side. And if you needed to spread out during a game or an event, you have the opportunity to do that. We still have a coaches' office, you can see we've got lockers in here for eight coaches, those are the half-height lockers with a full shower, toilet room, and then enough space for a desk for PE coach. And because those are accessed from the main gym, it can be, you know, sex for whatever coaches you have during that event. The other thing that was requested was an area to put the ice baths, taping, laundry, and just kind of general, we don't know what we might need it for, but we think we need some kind of an office, not really an office, but an enclosed room. So, for instance, weighing in for wrestling, I know the cross-country track coach said that they needed ice, at least one ice bath for after practices and meets, they need a taping table, so kind of a multipurpose room, and that's right off of the gym. All right, the other thing that was requested was two full-size cross courts. This gets a little messy. Due to the dimensions of a basketball court, your main court is going, this is north-south with your bleachers on this side and your bleachers on this side. Typically, what we do when we do a cross court is we line up the center circle from the cross court with the free throw line circle on the main court. So, in order to get two full-size cross courts, we have to shift the cross courts over. Typically, a cross court would be narrower than a full-size court. But we did want to show you, this is what we can fit in the gym that we have. If you would like a full-size court, we can do minimal court lines for those cross courts, but you're really looking at about three-foot clearance on the sides, both sides, and then about four feet in between where the divider curtain is. The staff had requested 10 feet, you know, between courts so that the divider curtain had five feet on either side, and then clearances on the outside as well. So, this is something that we'll need feedback from you on. You know, we could look at making the gym bigger, but financially, economically, that's not going to happen. But the next question is, is do you want these to be striped as full courts, or do you want them to be the narrower cross courts like we would typically do? And then we can look at creative ways to do the striping and marking to make it work either way. But just so that there's full disclosure that this is four feet between courts and this is about three feet on the sides.
What was the application that they asked for the two cross courts? Was it for practice?
Typically, it's for practices.
Yeah.
I think the ability to host multi-team, four teams to have an event going on.
Well, I don't know. Where do those bleachers come out to, though? Is there room for that?
No, when you have the cross courts active, you push the bleachers back all the way, so there's no seating.
You'd have to sit in the balcony bleachers.
And you can't get to those unless these bleachers are open, correct? So, really, it's not meant to be for events.
It's just practice.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Okay, just wanted to make sure we understood that. So, you want to know if we need it striped or lined for...
Well, we will, yeah, you can see all these circles and...
Too many lines.
Now, typically for cross courts, we wouldn't do every single court lined. Sometimes we'll just mark the corners of the courts and a few strategic other locations, and we can do layouts for that. But I think the key point here is that, you know, your center circles don't line up, there's some weirdness going on.
Right.
You know, most schools, and I don't think we've ever done a school that hasn't done narrower cross courts. So, that's a discussion that you need to have with your athletic and PE people and find out, is that really, really what they need?
And really, that decision can be made, and if it just comes down to striping on the floor or something, yeah.
Yeah, you've got time to decide that, but that was one thing that they requested, we wanted to respond to that.
Okay.
I'm just going to go back to the gym plan for just a second. So, this is the gymnasium with the bleachers pulled out, and you're looking at it from the second floor. So, your main floor bleachers, you can see the darker lines is what we have called out for the base bid. For the alternate bid, we're talking about the bleachers up on the mezzanine. The pricing that SS has put together is for 700 bleachers on the floor, so in order to be able to do that, this is, I think, 400 or 500 on one full side, is to leave out the two end sections on the other side, on the visitor's side. So, when we get to bidding, the base bid is what you see in the darker colors, the lighter here, here, and then these two sides that aren't showing up right now would be the alternate bid. All right, so you have the ability to add those bleachers at any time, but in order to hit our dollar numbers, this is the configuration that we would recommend.
And the two on the side there that is included in the alternate bid number?
Well, yes.
Okay.
Yep. But I just wanted you to see, this is how we would do it. Originally, we thought we'd have 350 on this side and 350 on this side, but with the clearances that we need to get up over the locker rooms and those kinds of things, we need a certain number of rows on the floor. That number ends up being about 1,000 seats on the floor, the remainder up on the upper All right, one idea that I mentioned the last time we were here, and it's something that we've talked about from the very beginning of our visioning sessions, was creating wellness and fitness aspects throughout the whole building. And so, when we met with the PE staff, we talked about the idea of the fitness trail that's in the building, that's something that students could use, staff could use, and the public could also use. So, what we've laid out on here, and I'll come back with a lot more information later on what the different stations are, but eight stations that create an eighth of a mile lap through the building. So, if you were to start here at the climbing wall, which I don't have an update on tonight, you go down the corridor, up the stairs at the other end. On the second floor, you come up the stairs, you go back towards the commons, down the main stair, and you return to the climbing wall, that's one-eighth of a mile, so eight laps would be a mile. Along the route, you can see these little kind of dash lines, those would each be a fitness station. So, at a fitness station, there would be an environmental graphic or signage that would give you instruction on what you're to do or what you should be focusing on at that station, whether it's agility, flexibility, hydration, fitness, strength, balance, those different kinds of things. So, we'll work with the PE staff to come up with what each of those activities are. And so, this is really just denoted by a flooring pattern and some signage that will go into the project, but it's a really easy way to add another level of wellness to the project. So, we're pretty excited about it. All right, the next thing you'll have in your packet is some updated images. Like I mentioned, the last time I was here, these are rough renderings, so the colors don't exactly come through, they're not photo quality, those kinds of things, but we just wanted to give you an update. We've been working internally on, you know, the exterior skin of the building, most of it's the same. We made a few modifications that we felt kind of simplified it or added more of a human scale. So, one thing you'll see is around the building, there's a band at the bottom that continues around most of the building, that's just a different texture of that fiber cement, so it's more like a stone pattern, you know, so it's like at five feet, so it gives you more of a human scale and not such a great big giant box. So, that's one thing that we incorporated. We just made a few modifications here and there. We're working with a lighting designer on the lighting of this kind of entry feature, you know, doing some uplighting so that you can see that large overhang and some feature lighting, stuff like that.
I like the way you wrap those columns. I don't know if it was that way before, but I like it with the stone look.
Yeah, it was like that before.
Okay.
Yep.
It's funny what you see each time you revisit the plan.
Yeah. The other thing that we added was an overhang or a canopy here at the main student entrance, this is at the bus drop-off area, so that it kind of denotes it as an entrance to the building, but also provides some cover for students as they're coming in in the morning or leaving at the end of the day if it's raining or inclement weather. This is just a little bit closer view of the main entry. You can see we've got the balcony, the columns. We'll be adding some detail, I think, to the columns, these are wood, probably bracing it back to the building and just adding some interesting, you know, connections and those kinds of things, just kind of fleshing it out a little bit more. All right, this is the west side of the school, so this is the future high school entrance. So, this is also your event entry. We've been working on adding an overhang canopy at this location as well, and I apologize, it doesn't show up well with all the lights on, and I think your copies are a little bit dark. Half of the building is in shadow, which is why it looks so dark, it's not that color. But keeping in mind that in the future, there's going to be administration addition in this location and then extending along this side. So, trying to do a little bit now, but save some of the wow for later as well, but still to match that language and keep this as, yes, this is an entrance to the building. I think we'll zoom in a little bit closer. You can see we started to show some signage on the side of the building, Comets, and then we have Charles City High School, some signage on top of the entry canopy as well. We've got the same columns that are wrapped in stone and then kind of a transition wall piece to kind of separate the gymnasium section from this kind of entry commons. This is just another closer view of that. You can see we added some more windows into the commons on this side, I know that's one thing that Jim had commented on, that he thought that there should be more glazing on this side, and we agreed with that. It adds another level of daylight coming into some of those spaces, especially the survey area.
Jean, those low windows, you see where the logo is, Comets, you get the high window to the right, to the right, the logo, the fireball.
Here?
Yeah, what are those? Are those into the restroom or the locker room?
Those go into the locker rooms, and that's one of the things I wanted to talk to you about was storm sheltering kind of issues in the building and what our options are and what we can do, what level do we want to take it to? So, we'll get back to that. Going into the interior of the building, one of the concerns that folks had with the treehouse and this stair was what about kids throwing things off of the treehouse onto the kids below, those kinds of things. So, we met as a design team and just kind of brainstormed some different ideas, and one of the ideas we had was to wrap the treehouse instead of doing a traditional railing, was to do more of like a picket fence, if you will, something that looks like something students would have built for a treehouse. So, the idea is to get either reclaimed wood or wood that's harvested off the project site to use for those pickets, and they would be of varying heights and textures and spacings to create some interest, so that when we want a higher side so that students can't lean over and throw things, we can make it a little bit higher. Where we want to have a view, we can make it much lower to guardrail height and then you can see out what's going on. It also creates some unique opportunities for lighting and some creative ways to make that just an interesting space, add a little more texture and dimension to the project. So, this is just a really quick pop something in there and we'll keep refining it, but that's the intention. We've got the seating in here set up for, I believe, a banquet, something more like a banquet. So, I'm going to go to the next one. So, if you were standing up in the information commons, we've got windows that go into the gymnasium, so as you're standing up here on this upper level, you can see into the gym and see what's going on, which is a nice way to get some natural daylight into the gym but also kind of create that connection between the two spaces. You can see we've added some display cases between the gym doors, we slid these doors to the west and these doors to the east so they're not directly behind the basketball goal, which they were before, but that gives us the opportunity to put some display cases in. You can also see we're showing some projection screens. So, we would envision if there were a speaker during an event or a banquet-type event, they would be standing in front of the display cases with the projection screen above them. So, if you're sitting in the lower commons, you can look up, if you can't see the speaker, then you can look right above them and they'll be projected on that, so that we can utilize the upper level, the lower level, and the main level of the commons.
Excuse me, when we were in Independence, didn't we see where they were televising, were they televising some of their sports on an outside TV so that if you were out in concessions, would we have that capability as well then?
Sure, yeah. All right, I'm going to go back to the floor plans that we can kind of talk a little bit about, because one thing teachers asked us, almost every group, was where do we go if there's a tornado, where do we go if there's a storm event? There's a few different ways you can handle it. So, starting in Area A, typically the ideal place to do any kind of storm sheltering would be in the locker rooms. Typically, there's no windows, it's a hardened space, we have precast concrete as a lid to that space, it makes a lot of sense. So, I think we would like to have natural daylight into those locker rooms if we were to want to use that as a storm sheltering. If we were to want to use that as a storm sheltering place, though, they would need to have shutters on them, which comes with a cost. Or we would need to eliminate those windows, you know, to provide a location for people to go. Now, these two locker rooms are not enough space. If there is an event, there's just not enough space in the building for everyone to go. Looking at the learning studio areas, there's a few opportunities, especially on the first floor. We have the media labs and the control booth in between. We also have the toilet rooms here and here, and then some of the special ed spaces. Between all of these spaces, plus the media labs upstairs, I think I totaled up about four hundred and some places, plus the locker rooms. So I think we've got enough throughout the building. It's just a matter of how close, you know, during a given day, are there always people in the gym? Are there always 500 people in the learning studios? That's kind of a balancing act. But really, what you're, what you're looking for is going to depend on what your requirements are. So if you wanted to provide a FEMA-rated storm shelter, with that comes a lot of really stringent requirements on what you have to have. You have to have two-hour firewalls. You have to have tornado missile impact rated walls and roof. You have to have inspections during construction by, you know, qualified structural engineers. There's a lot that goes into it and a lot of additional cost. If you're looking at doing something similar to that, just without the rating, the official rating, you know, you can do concrete block walls that are grouted and a concrete cap, but not do some of the other requirements. For instance, if you have more than 50 people, you're required to provide a restroom within that space. You're required to ventilate that space at a certain rate. You have to have an access hatch that swings in. There's a laundry list of requirements. If you don't, if you say, "We don't want to spend the money to be up here, we want to be somewhere in the middle," then the next option is, "We don't do anything special. We just designate areas that don't have windows," and that's where, that's where folks go. So you have some options in what those levels are. I don't have costs tonight, but I did want to let you know, after doing all the headcounts, we can fit everybody in a normal school day into a space. It's just a matter of how is that space enclosed?
My understanding on that process, we've talked about safe rooms and things before, and we had the gentleman come from the emergency management folks. And my understanding is we're kind of in the process of getting that plan up to date so that we become eligible for federal funds when they become available. Is that correct?
Yeah. So that was my understanding as well.
Okay. And I know that gentleman left, and we have maybe a new one, so we need to maybe follow up on that. But that was kind of my interpretation or my understanding, was that we were in the process of making ourselves eligible to, at some point, be able to do, you know, something of this top level. It's probably just not right at this minute or right now.
Right. And I think my understanding was that the funds aren't available right now, so even if you applied, you wouldn't have any.
Right.
But we were, even if they were available, we weren't eligible until we had that.
Right.
Until we had that session.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Trying to think if there's anything else. I think, any questions on anything that you've seen so far?
Justin, you need to get them the potential new logo when it's available and ready. So that they update their drawings.
I didn't know there was a new logo. That's exciting.
There's a new logo in the works. Not ready yet, but when it is, we will get it to you.
Perfect.
Do you want to share some of the things that you shared with me?
The, the serving area that we've talked about, still is in the process of being refined.
Yes, I have not updated anything yet.
And so...
On the first and second floors.
On the first and second floors.
Okay.
Is there a point at which it's too late to make any revisions?
If we're just talking about equipment, we're not there yet. If we're talking about major changes to, you know, if we're talking about not having decentralized serving, yeah, we're getting, we're past that.
Okay. I mean, it, it still isn't clear how decentralized serving is going to work. I know our next trip isn't for another three weeks, I would imagine, to Decorah.
Okay.
And, and so that still is a problem area. Problem might not be the right word, but it still is an area that needs to be...
It's an unresolved area.
It's an unresolved area.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Well, I feel, oh, go ahead, Jason.
I also question how it will serve as a events concession stand type of thing, you know, how simple that is, with the layout.
The one in the cafeteria.
Yeah, the one in the cafeteria.
Mm-hmm. I guess at this point, we're looking for you to tell us how you would like to run your food service program to, you know, kind of give us, this is, this is how we want to do it, or this is what we're thinking, and we can respond to that. But at this point, I don't feel like we have a clear direction. And I'm not sure that you have a clear direction to give me.
Right.
Yeah. We're, I, I believe that, you know, with some of these food service companies that we've been talking to or that we've interviewed, you know, their, their schools, we've visited Albert Lee and then Casson, Minnesota, they've got the capability to help us get there. But we have to finish going through the process to figure out where we will take the food service program if we decide to make changes and...
Mm-hmm.
But, yeah, it's a good question about, about, I can, I can see how this area in the commons could work. I, I compare that to Casson, Minnesota, in my mind, is, is how it looks, but...
I'm still not sold on the...
Decentralized?
I, I don't get how it's going to relate long-term to a kitchen that's nowhere near it.
It's a problem.
That's...
Yeah. It's hard to have it all, you know, with the way we've set up these spaces.
I'm going to defer that to you people.
Yeah, not having seen what you guys have seen, I don't really know what, what to expect here with some of the trips that you've made on...
Well, and, and truly, you know, none of us sitting here are the experts in food service. I mean, I, once upon a time, I had a career in food service. But, you know, not, not to the degree of, of serving, you know, 300, you know, 700 mouths in an afternoon. I believe that, you know, soon, we'll be able to get some of those answers from those food service experts, and they'll be able to help us drill down and get this thing figured out. But we, we definitely need some of their help and guidance.
And all along the way, I've interpreted this, or envisioned this, was the concept, like at the state school board convention, where the serving lines and the food's prepared in a centralized kitchen. And that worked phenomenally for 1,500 people or whatever were there that day.
Yeah.
That's the concept that I've had in my head, that I've assumed, of how this functions. I don't know how that fits with what you guys have seen, and how those companies work with that infrastructure, I guess.
I can see a blend between what you're proposing and what we saw in Casson, Minnesota.
Yeah.
You know, what we saw in Albert Lee was clearly like a shopping mall, you know, stop at this window, stop at that window. But I think Casson, Minnesota, had the flexibility of different equipment that was on casters. Some of it was permanently plumbed, you know, with, with, you know, drains or electricity, and it was immobile. And I, I can see how, what is proposed here, you know, where you can feed children from both sides of the bar, let's say, like we see at banquets, would work. But I think it's got to be a blend of both of those, because we still have the, we still want to use this area for concessions. And you don't have kind of a serving buffet, you know, for that.
And blending it with the cafe space, if that, if that's how that blend is implemented, then that's, that's kind of how I've seen it work in my mind. But I, like I said, I don't, I'm not an expert on that, and I haven't seen what you guys have seen, so...
Yeah. Well, we'll get there, Jean.
We will.
No, I just wanted to say, I don't know if you folks had seen this. I know you saw this. Charles City has been awarded a grant from Iowa Department of Public Health to encourage, increase, and improve physical activity and nutrition in the community. Residents of the Charles City community are invited to join an asset mapping activity tomorrow at 5:30 PM in the City Hall Council chamber to identify nutritional and physical activity assets within Charles City. Well, I think what you have outlined here with our fitness route in, in the school, you know, we're ahead of the curve ball here, and, and yet, there's a grant that's been awarded. I'm not sure what the community will, will do with this grant. I don't, I don't know how much the grant is. It doesn't define that, but we're on track. We're ahead of the track. We can lead the community in that.
Anything else for Jean? We're not quite ready for that.
I like the addition of the covered area outside.
The entries.
Yeah. I think that will really help students and will help just delineate that, hey, here's an entrance.
Correct, yeah. This is the north entrance, the west entrance, the east entrance, to make it easier for folks.
Right.
So what's our next step in the process?
We just keep truckin' on the drawings. And if I need something, so like, for instance, food service, I'll need some input. Athletics, I'll need some input. We'll start to bring finishes, interior finishes, colors, those kinds of things, you know, probably more monthly moving forward. But really, we'll bring check sets when we hit 25% construction documents, 50%, 75%. We'll, we'll bring you drawings and specifications so that you can review those, because everybody loves a long specification book. As kind of updates, and then when we need something, we'll, we'll ask you for, for input on what we need.
So we're looking at initial bidding as of when?
Estes is going to cover that in just a minute.
Okay.
Yeah.
We'll get to that.
Mm-hmm.
Any other board comments?
Jean, can you go to that, that food service area in the commons? Can we look at that? I think there's a good shot on page three.
Is this the one you're thinking? Oh, yeah, it's on the admin page. Hold on.
Is there another one?
Maybe. This has the, a part of it.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Page eleven.
Okay.
The upper portion.
Okay. So as we look at that, to the far left, you've got a cash register. Is that right?
Yep.
Okay. And then in the middle, is that the salad bar?
Yeah. And I, really, all I did was I took some different, you know, these are mobile cards, hot and, hot and cold food cards, a couple refrigerators, a handwashing sink, and some, you know, hot and cold serving, a salad bar and a cash register, and plopped them in there.
Okay.
And that's all I did.
Okay.
We have a food service consultant that does equipment layout.
Okay.
And so all I have to do is say, "Ed, they want to be able to serve X, Y, Z in this area, and it needs to be concession stand. Give me the equipment and the layout that does that."
Yeah.
And he'll do that for us. I just didn't have the X, Y, Z to tell him yet.
Yeah, that makes sense.
You know, so if we give a li, if I give him a list of requirements for that area, he'll lay everything out, send it back to me, I'll bring it back here. You guys can take a look at it.
Okay. So orientation, there is not set in stone?
No, 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 no.
That makes sense.
All I know is you guys probably need an enclosed storage for concessions. They need to be able to wheel stuff out, have a counter at which to serve it, those kinds of things. We know we have to have our elevator equipment room here, and we know we need a handwashing sink at least, and then an assortment of other equipment and whatnot to get the food served. You know, so whether that's, you know, six hot and cold storage units to bring food over from the kitchen, or it's five, or it's 10, we know there's going to be something. We know we're going to have to have trays. You know, the students will have to stack their trays on the racks, so we can take those back for dishwashing. So there's some things we know we need. It's just a matter of what exactly are we serving? Are we just serving a traditional cafeteria-style serving? Or is it a grab-and-go? Or is it a salad bar? Those kinds of things.
All of that relates to your committee work, yeah.
Yeah. About how many square feet is that area?
Um, I really don't know.
I mean, would you guess?
I don't like, I don't like to guess at a board meeting.
It says 472 on one, on page three.
On page three.
Okay. That's what I was wondering, it was maybe about 500 square feet.
Yeah, it's a little bit smaller area than the other two cafe-serving areas.
That'll work.
In the cafe space, Dr. Cox, and you, your conversation with the FCS, is that kind of ongoing in maybe some, like, orientation types of things? Or was it more major than the conversation you were...
I don't know.
Not sure yet.
I don't know yet, yeah.
Yeah.
We're not there yet.
I think we've had enough space to do the serving. It's just a matter of what's the consideration.
Do you have that one blown up?
I don't think I do. I didn't bring everything with me this time.
It's on page two, kind of.
So this is the second floor. So the way we have this set up was with a teaching station for cooking, you know, the hot and cold storage bins, and then this is just a serving line and a salad bar, milk, you know, the milk coolers, those kinds of things, just kind of as placeholders for now. What Dr. Cox and I talked about was having two, kind of two serving lines with like a grab-and-go that you can go through quickly, a longer line that has more of the select what you want, and then a cash register that can catch both of those groups. Go ahead, Dr. Cox.
I was actually trying to type, and so I didn't catch everything that you said. What are the placeholder items that you have right now?
So right now, this is trays for dirty trays. This is a teaching station, so a cooking teaching station, salad bar. This is just hot and cold serving line. These are the hot and cold storage cabinets, and you plug those in, and they keep food hot or cold. A couple refrigerators, milk coolers, you know, your real traditional, just those kinds of things. You know, and, and kitchen equipment varies greatly, just like if you were to buy a car or to buy furniture. You can get, you know, a Yugo, or you can get, you know, a Jaguar. You know, and, and really, if, if we can set a budget and we can give Ed some direction on this is what we want to serve, this is what, how we want to do it, he can give us price options, you know, for that kind of equipment.
If that was to be a non-teaching area, but a decentralized serving area, do you have a way shown as to how that is then, I don't know, closed off from traffic so that kids aren't just wandering through there in non-serving hours?
Yeah, we would probably need to have, we'd probably have to have a gate system that went across here. And it may be something where we have some piers with some openings between them, and then we could have several, several pull-down gates or slide across. Typically, that's what we would do.
Okay. But that's not in yet or shown yet?
No. Really, I didn't want to spend a lot of time working on food service until we finished our site visits and really talked about what your goals are.
Makes sense. So when are you making your next visit?
Sometime in March. I think it's around the spring break.
After spring break.
That was to Decorah?
To Decorah.
Anything else by the board? Were there any comments by the public or questions?
I think I've answered my own question.
Okay.
One other question, and Doug...
Could you come up to the microphone?
Doug, like I'm speaking, and I don't know if you're to this point yet. On the exterior walls, I'm not concerned about the finish on the inside, more concerned about insulation and material on the outside. One of the pictures you're showing shows a lot of block, but I don't know if that's real block or simulation. I'm just wondering if you can comment at this point.
Sure. What we're using for the, for the exterior of the building is we have a structural steel frame for the building, and then we have structural insulated panel system. So that's a layer of plywood, about four and a half, five inches of insulation, and then another layer of plywood. It makes a sandwich panel. And then on the exterior, we'll have mostly fiber cement panels, which are super durable panel, and it comes in different textures. So what you saw on the exterior views... Let me zoom in a little bit closer. So for example, this kind of cream color is a smoother face fiber cement panel. And panels come in limited sizes, so what you're seeing, what looks like blocks, are actually like two-foot by four-foot panel pieces, and that's the pattern that those make on the wall. What you're seeing in this kind of bluish-gray color, we're looking at either just a different texture fiber cement panel, or maybe a metal, a metal panel with a rib pattern to it. And then along the bottom, where I said there's more of a stone pattern, that's also a fiber cement. It just looks like stone, or like a stacked stone. So that's what's on the outside of the building. So very durable materials, very minimal maintenance. And the same thing for the, for the columns. We're looking at doing possibly some wood deck up here, depending on budget numbers and how that comes out, so...
Those are all very acceptable materials in the Mid-American rebate program, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah. So the insulation on the walls is very good. You can, we're looking at doing a six-and-a-half-inch panel, total thickness. For the Mid-American rebate, one of our options is to go to an eight... For the Mid-American rebate, one of our options is to go to an eight and a quarter inch panel, so it increases that insulation R-value. Now, whether or not that has a big effect on the rebate, you know, typically increasing your wall insulation does not give you that much of a savings. It's when you increase your roof insulation that really makes a big difference. And for the roof, we've already got six inches of insulation included, so it's an R-30, close to an R-30.
Anything else for Jean?
No. Good updates.
Let's keep moving along, Jean, and get this going. Agenda item five is middle school budget, design budget with Paul from Estes Construction.
Good evening. I'm Pete with Estes Construction. Paul Newhart can join us tonight, so I am here to, and Scott Scheller is also here with me, to walk you through the budget that we've updated per the February 9th Design Development documents, which would have been the board meeting from two weeks ago. So in the packet, you should have received the executive summary of the estimate, and that essentially gives you the highlight of all of the detail and the outreach that we have been doing, both based on historical data that we have with other similar projects, and certainly in the area with the contractors that we have identified as the possibility of engaging for this project. So return to the executive summary. What you'll note is that it is compiled of three columns, and what it is, it's intended to show how the budget has been tracking at each stage of development in the documents. So what we want to focus on is the furthest right column, which is the DD-presented budget, which would have been from February 9th. If you look at the bottom line on total project cost, you'll note that we're tracking right where we were the last time in terms of where the project budget sits. So while the numbers show slight variance, we are under the 18.5 budget that was outlined. We're at 18.466, as you see there. And one of the items that we're not quite sure exactly where it's going to end up is the energy rebate that has been discussed briefly here. The number you see right above our total is a conservative approach that we wanted to show you based on the last meeting with the White Group and the Mid-America Energy possibility. Now, that number could certainly contribute more than what we're indicating, but at this point, it's too early to tell exactly how much more. So with that in mind, the following pages do identify what we call smart choices or options that will, for instance, the kitchen equipment. Because that seems to be still a dynamic part of the project, we want to make sure that we identify what that equipment could be based on the input that we get back. We'll narrow in on what that number actually is. So those options there identify several things, and we can certainly touch on some of them, like the wood decking that Jean mentioned and the commons ceiling. That very nice feature, is that something that you want included in the project? Or do we go with the standard acoustical metal deck? And thus, we've outlined a cost opportunity there on each one of those. If I may, page four of the executive summary, there's two paragraphs down at the bottom of the page, remaining costs for consideration. There, we identified the First Avenue extension. Not knowing exactly the entire scope of that project, we want to make sure it doesn't fall off the page, so to speak, and we can at some point get a scope, put a cost to that, and then identify exactly when that needs to get done in the construction schedule. Final energy rebate, as I mentioned, that is yet to be determined based on the White Group's consulting and the feedback that we're getting from the engineering team and the design team to them. The other opportunity is building permit relief. You'll note that that is a number that we wanted to include because typically we see that cost. However, if there's an opportunity to negotiate with the city or others that have a say in what could be expected in terms of building permit cost, we would want to identify that and then plug that number in so that it's no longer kind of a moving target. So then it's set, and that's what everyone's working towards.
And the placeholder number that you have in here for that, is that based on feedback from the city, or is that the current, the preliminary estimate of what they?
It is. It's currently based on their commercial construction cost per thousand, and it is right in their website and information. Yeah, that's where we drew that from.
And is that a conversation then that we would have, or that you guys have with the city? Have you had that conversation at all, or is that something that we should pursue?
We have had some exchange, however, we're not, I guess, in a position to be able to negotiate that. Certainly, I know Jean has had some conversations with some of the folks over there. I've exchanged emails with them, but I think it's at a point where maybe your input and your insight could be a benefit.
Okay, excellent.
Have you had conversations?
I had that conversation today.
With?
With a city official.
Okay.
So it has at least started.
Okay. But no indication?
I don't have a definitive answer for you, but I can say that I had the conversation about one o'clock today, and at least it's begun.
Okay.
At that price range, that would be one of their employees' full-time salaries, so I would hope they'd be on our site seven days a week, or five days a week. I mean, for a building permit, I mean, it's a year's salary.
$54,000, yeah.
$54,000.
Yes. And then the last paragraph there, conclusions and recommendations. These are things that we want to make sure we keep tracking with because the final scope of the project, the alternates that you would like to see included. The reason we want to make sure we highlight some of those is because they could, some of those options could be base bid as part of the project. In other words, that has to be in the project. Or let's identify that as an alternate when we go out to bid, and if the market is favorable, the numbers come in lower than we expect, then we can choose to add those alternates to the project. So we want to keep tracking with that as we move forward. Another portion, complete early phase construction documents, prepare bid notices and issue for bid. We're highlighting that because there may be an opportunity here to issue an early bid package. And to your question regarding when can we start moving some dirt, when can we get some construction activity? Right now, we're thinking and working with Jean and her design team that if we're looking at identifying an early bid package, we would start doing that collectively with her team middle of March, and hopefully have something prepared to go out for bid mid to late April. Now, it may seem like, oh, that's plenty of time. However, we want to make sure that designers, the engineers have enough time to run through the geotechnical report, make sure that those items are identified on the documents, because if we minimize risk to the contractors, the prices, the bids are bound to be more competitive. So if we pull as much risk off the table by having complete documents, the prices should be more competitive as we move forward. And then the last item, detailed FFNE and technology and telecom, what those are. Right now, you'll notice the dollar amounts of those two items are approximately 5% of the project budget. So what we want to do is identify, okay, what constitutes FFNE? Is that just furniture? Is it part of the kitchen equipment? What constitutes the telecommunications and security? Is it part of the audiovisual system? Is it the cameras themselves? Is it the projectors? So you can see that by identifying what goes into those different budget items, we can narrow down what those items are and not put them in the, or not identify them as general construction items but FFNE or telecom and security items.
Is that accomplished through conversations with those affected staff, I assume?
I think so. I think between the building committee, the staff, the board, certainly with Jean and her team, and we would also want to know what of those items fall into general construction and what would fall into the others, so we can identify those as we craft the bid packages. In the booklet there, I don't know that I included it for the board packet, however, you see the initiation of a project schedule. Up until this point, you've seen BLDD's had a narrative that would be tab number three. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You've seen BLDD's bulleted, what we call milestone dates. What's reflected here is in concert with those bulleted dates, and we'll keep refining these dates as we move forward with Jean and her design team. I know Jean and Scott have had detailed conversations regarding what the opportunities are for early bid packing, when can the rest of the project go out for bid, when can dirt get going, how soon can we get some, maybe some site clearing, some demolition, some tree removal, some of those things. So those conversations are ongoing, and the schedule that you see here will only grow in terms of detail. However, we'll make sure we narrate it so that you're not bogged down with a lot of the details. But they'll be available to you.
So we may not necessarily need to, at this time, prioritize the smart choice options. Those, what you're saying would all go out as, and there would be a cost come back associated with those in the bidding process. We'd be able to see, okay, we have an extra X number of dollars to work with. At that time, we would pick and choose from that list of what to fill that hole. Is that accurate?
Partly, yes. The other part of the smart choices here is some of these have been smart choices identified in the order of magnitude budgets that we've already done, but at some point, we'll want to know, okay, that is going to be part of the project, or no, it is not. Let's leave that as an alternate. And then some of them, as Jean alluded to with the gymnasium seating, for example, do we include the whole bleacher count, or do we stick to the 700? And if we include all of it, what does that mean to the total project budget? So there are some things that the drawings currently reflect, so I think it's going to take some collaboration between us, Jean and her design team, and certainly your input to narrow those down.
That was a kind of a question I had with specifically some of the gym equipment, you know, the athletic area lockers, athletic equipment, extra seats, you know, those are things that are targeted as being a great opportunity to fundraise for. And so that was, I guess, on those types of things, if we're going to fundraise for them, you know, is there a financial incentive to have them included in the original bid? Or are those types of things that, well, we're going to buy them from a vendor anyways, and they cost about the same installed, whether they're a part of that bigger construction project? Does that make sense?
Yeah, we've seen it done both ways. Sometimes we do get an economy of scale savings. On some of these items, though, they're very specific athletic equipment. That's something that you could probably go directly through a vendor in your fundraising efforts to make those happen. Now, would we get economy out of the labor and in the installation during construction? Probably yes. But if the money isn't there, then we would have to go to Plan B.
Okay.
The same thing with the extra bleachers. I mean, if they were put in during construction, we would probably have some savings in purchasing and installation.
Yes. And that, the way Jean and her team have those outlined now, where they're tightened in on the visitor's side, that's a good alternate, because then we can say, add alternate for the additional two Ns. And if the numbers come back favorable, that's a choice you can make at that time to include them or not.
Or the fundraising.
Or the fundraising's complete.
Yeah.
Yes.
You know, at that time.
Right, right.
Just buy them all and put them all in at once.
Yes, and put them all in.
And there would be some savings.
Correct, yes.
Versus buying them later and putting them in.
Putting them in, yeah. And that's a good alternate. That's a very clear-cut alternate to say, okay, we can't get everything, we can't get all the seats, but we know what the value of them. Some alternates will be a little bit more, will substitute this in lieu of that, and they're probably not as black and white, if you will. But that's why we've identified a series of those.
So do we, it's on the agenda for possible action to adjust the design or alternates in the bid documents. Are we ready to do that this evening? Or do we just want to continue on?
Yeah.
Recommendation?
Well, you know, I see $2 million worth of smart choice options, and there are things on that list that I would have anticipated being part of the 18.45 million dollar original price, so I don't know. I'm at a loss for that. And you're down two board members, so maybe you don't want to take action tonight.
I just wanted to make a suggestion. This is, this estimate is based on the documents from February 9th. We've been making changes since then. I think this is a great night to introduce the detailed estimate to you, but I would recommend that you wait until we have a chance to continue working together and make some recommendations. We can make some design changes to absorb some of those things. But typically, what we'll do is, you know, Pete and Paul and Blake and Scott and his team and my team, we get together and say, these make sense for an alternate, these don't make sense for an alternate, these are things we need the owner to make the call. What's their priority? So I would say at this point, I would recommend that you not take any action. Let us do our jobs a little bit longer and give you something really cut and dry to be able to vote on.
And their work is slightly behind your work by two or three weeks or four weeks, so...
Right. And we talked the other day, you know, we've got some updated information for them, and it's a fine line between what do we include and what do we not include, you know, for coming to you as a board, so.
And that's a great point, Jean. Thank you for bringing that up. Certainly, as Jean and her team have updated the documents, we've tried to include some of the bigger updates, but there's certainly more collaboration that we need to do to refine some of these numbers, so.
Between meetings, you know, my personal opinion is if there are things that come up, the fore discussion that we need to discuss, that a brief work session like we did previously was very productive, that, don't be afraid to ask, you know, if that's an opportunity for us to stay on schedule, of course, with the timeline, so.
Absolutely. And we'll be doing that outreach to you then, and working with Jean and her team. We'll include you in that collaboration, and we'll keep moving forward.
Excellent.
Very good. Thank you, Pete.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item six is the athletic complex. That'll be Dr. Cox.
I am still waiting on some numbers from the civil engineer, so there's no additional information to report right now.
I guess I would maybe provide an update on the last Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting that we had with the coaches and the direction that we're going with that. I guess maybe we haven't really updated that. Or had you provided that update of why you're requesting that information?
No.
I didn't think so.
I wasn't able to make that meeting, and I haven't been updated.
Yeah. So my understanding is that our next step, if we were to go forward with asking the city for permission, is the way I would put it, is that we needed to lay out exactly where things are, almost to the level of construction documents, is my understanding. And of course, to do that, there may or may not be a large cost associated with developing those documents. And we had asked to get an estimate from Yaggy Colley or whatever, whatever they're called now, to what that may be and what that number came back to. If there was a very large number associated with creating those documents upfront, before we can even go to ask for permission, then that may change the scope of the project or our opinions on the project. or our opinions on the project, I guess, so.
And isn't that for the planned development?
Planned unit development.
Planned unit development versus the city just changing their zoning ordinances to allow for a sports complex, which they have not done?
I, no. It's for a planned unit development, and I can't comment as to what the other option was because I've forgotten. All that's ever talked about is planned unit development. And I can share also that one of the consultants who's been working with us has relocated, taken another job. And so that's probably why I haven't gotten a response, because they're down a person. So.
I just wanted to further elaborate a little bit on that, where we were at with that and why we were.
We don't want to spend a whole bunch more money on this if it's not going to work out. And so we're just trying to figure out how much money potentially could it be that we would need to have done in these extensive drawings.
Of course, we would need those either way. At some point, it's just the timing of them may be problematic with the cost, so.
We tabled agenda item seven, so we'll move to agenda item eight, support staff early retirement benefits. That would be Dr. Cox.
Yeah, me or Terry.
Terry, you want to take that, or you want Dr. Cox to?
During our negotiation session, the topic came up about an early retirement incentive for support staff. There still is time. It's a small window of opportunity. And in those discussions, because this is now a mandatory subject of bargaining, the feeling from the support staff group was that they would like to see something offered. So Terry and our attorney have prepared a resolution for your consideration for tonight. And basically, it lays out that anyone who has been employed at least 10 years with the district and is 55 by June 30th can qualify for an early retirement incentive as a support staff person. I believe there are 15 possible.
Seventeen.
Seventeen employees who would qualify for such an option.
You know, and as we were meeting last week and we talked about it, we had felt that, you know, it might provide an opportunity to, you know, bring in some other staff at a lower wage because these folks have been with the district a longer period of time. It would naturally be a lower wage. And maybe in a case or two, I don't know about what the jobs might be that we might get through retirement, we might not need to replace all of the jobs, or maybe you don't need the full-time, maybe the part-time. You know, as we're moving and transitioning to the single campus, it just seems to make sense to be able to have that flexibility. And as well, you know, we benefit from possibly taking something that is really instrumental to students, a teacher, or an aide, or whatever, off the table as we look at budget cuts moving forward.
Yeah. I definitely agree. I think it's a, we don't really have a history of offering this to support staff. Is that accurate?
That's accurate.
Correct.
I don't ever remember it being offered in the past, but.
I think the timing is very unique in that, you know, like you said, moving to a single campus school, but also the budget cuts. I mean, that may, any cost savings realized from that would go a long ways towards maybe pulling some other things off of that list. So I support that.
So at this point, this is a discussion item only? You, what, have to send this to the Educational Services Association for their consideration? If they approve, then we would need a short board meeting later in the week to officially approve this resolution? Is that correct?
That's correct. And what kind of timing? How long are we, how long notice would they have to, or how long would they have to give their notice?
March 18th.
March 18th.
At 3:00 PM is the date by which they would have to turn in their notice.
So our next meeting is the 16th, is it?
Right.
So we wouldn't?
Oh, go ahead.
We wouldn't quite have it by their next meeting?
Is it possible to approve, disapprove, whatever contingent upon approval of that association's review and acceptance?
No, because it's only listed as a discussion item. Sunshine Law would prevent this.
They may choose to modify it and send it back and.
Yeah.
And this type of a resolution requires, would require us to work together with them for mutually agreed-upon language. Is that accurate?
Yes, because it now is a mandatory subject of bargaining. So if we're going to entertain that, then both sides have to come to agreement as to what it would be.
And when do we think we'd hear back from the Educational Services Association?
I would think shortly.
Within a day or two?
If they're interested in offering this to their members, they're going to want to get back to us quickly so that we can give as much notice prior to that March 18th deadline.
So we may end up having a special board meeting later in the week?
Right.
Early morning or noon or something, even if it's via telephone?
Right.
Okay. I think it's fine to go ahead and proceed and give this to the Educational Association and Services Association, and we'll see what their response is and potentially plan on a short board meeting later in the week. Right?
Very good, yes.
Okay. And then we tabled, I didn't write it down.
Nine.
We tabled nine. So we'll move on to agenda item 10, superintendent contract extension.
This is an information item. If you weren't aware, the contract that you have with the superintendent expires on June 30th. And so at March, at our March 16th board meeting, we'll go through the second mid-year feedback session. And at that point, I would be requesting that the board extend the contract through June 30th of 2016.
Why only a one-year extension? Why not a two or a three?
I'm told that previous superintendents operated on one-year contracts, and it would be up to you.
But you could, yeah.
You have the ability to extend it one, two, or three years. I will law permits that.
Previously, when I was on the board, we had a two and a three-year floating contract.
But that changed.
That law changed.
Well, no, I'm not saying the law. The board decided.
The practice.
The practice changed.
So maybe for the past five to 10 years.
Doesn't mean that the practice couldn't be returned, correct?
Right.
If the board so desired to offer more than a one-year, we certainly could.
You have that option.
Okay. I can't make motions as president, but I would certainly encourage board members to consider more than a one-year.
Well, let's just say that we appreciate that you would be asking for another year here in the school district. We're happy to hear that.
Absolutely. Okay, so that will come up for consideration at a later point.
In March.
Agenda item 11, consideration of consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve consent agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented. Roll call vote, please.
Walker?
Yes.
Winery?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes. Motion carried three to zero. Agenda item 12, important upcoming dates.
Spring break is in two weeks.
Already?
Already. You know, it doesn't feel like it outside, but two weeks from today, we will be on spring break. So our next regular meeting is three weeks from today on Monday, March 16th. And then we'll follow that up the following Monday, the 23rd, with the second meeting of the month. And both of them are here in the middle school cafeteria.
Wow. When is the trimester coming to an end here?
Today.
Oh, today? Okay. Wow. Holy fuck, it's the last trimester of the year.
Going quick.
Hmm. Will we pass it out diplomas before you know it?
Yeah.
Anything else come before the board? If not, we will adjourn at 7:51.
Beat the three.